Gracious heaven, Father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day you've given us. Father, for the rain. Father, what a wonderful reminder that you are the great provider, that you watch over us, and that you love us, and you care for us, and give us all that we need. Father, we pray that you be with our wonderful community here. Lord, that it would be a safe place and a wonderful place to grow up and to grow old with our families and our loved ones. Father, we ask that you be with our emergency services, with our fire department, and our police departments, with our maintenance department, all those who serve this community and make it the great place that we know and love. Father, be with them, give them safety, and continue to watch over them and their families. Father, be with all the service men and women who make this country the country that it is, where we are free to gather together and to do the business of a community. Father, we thank you, this wonderful nation. And Father, we lift up these leaders and we ask that you give them wisdom and guidance. Father, we ask that you be with our church council, Lord, and that you give them wisdom and servant for each and every decision that comes across their desk, Father. Father, we pray you be with us this evening, continue to watch over us, and lead us in guidance. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Now pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one signed up, and that is Jimin Erky.
And the last man I address for the parole streets. And this month I'm just going to say a few words. Sherwood, Ripwood, from Sherwood down to Raleigh, Bluff, South Liquid Circuit, Martridge, Ronnet Circle, Bone, last circuit in the mid-nineties. Thank you.
Alrighty. Well then, we can move on to item number one. And this is my last meeting with the gavel, so I'm gonna use it as much as possible.
You're dangerous.
Okay, item number one, discuss and take appropriate action of the minutes for April two thousand twenty-one, regular section. I think the motion is set.
I think they're pretty well written.
All in favor? Any opposed? Item passes. Item two, discuss and take appropriate action of extension of the disaster declaration.
I'll take the motion to extend it for one month.
That's what we have been doing until the next meeting. Set it. Okay, with Bruce, all in favor? Any opposed? Item passes. Item three, discuss and take appropriate action to select the official newspaper for MPR. I think our current official newspaper is the Belt Journal.
I'll take the motion to extend it again with the Belt Journal. I would like to say something. I did call Donovan the day. They really, I know this was a discussion like three years ago, they sort of like, it felt like it was a fair deal with Tom. And I really felt expelled. I called Donovan the day over the, they didn't really explain the mayor and the city council and how it all works. And I, I was so impressed, I called Donovan and said, man, that article, it was really, they've stepped up their game, so I'm not taking the motion to re-keep them.
And I'd like to second the motion.
Okay. All over there. Any opposed? Item passes. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action, accessory building ordinance revisions.
Alright, so we wanted to put this one on here. It was supposed to be on last council meeting, but I was like, yeah, let's shorten it just a little bit, and we'll move it to this one. The big thing that we changed on here or updated, and we left the delete and insert, so you can kind of see what we've kind of changed and where we've kind of changed it. We wanted to make it more user-friendly for our residents. The way that the language was kind of written before, it basically allowed residents to almost put another house onto their property based off of percentage. So forgive me, it's been a little bit of time since we initially first did this, the P and Z had taken a look at it. Really, the only revision that P and Z had done was to remove the, we're gonna keep all the fees the same. So even if you have a two hundred fifty square foot building, there still will be a fee because of staff time and work to file that. But the percentage, we actually increased the percentage a little bit, and then we capped it, which would then allow, and then of course, we took it from four accessories down to two. It just allowed it to kind of have a little bit more, not control, that's not the right word, but make sure we keep that aesthetic appeal of the city. One thing we had to do, take into consideration, is the previous cover, you know, strong water drainage, and how that's gonna impact it. So this was kind of the happy meeting, we ran the numbers from basically a quarter acre lot all the way up to a five acre lot, and determined that that was kind of the happy number in there. With the right size requirements, it would allow somebody on a larger lot, if they wanted to, to go up to a fourteen hundred square foot building if they had the space for it. But inside of a half acre or quarter acre lot, it would be limited to that property size, but it would still give them enough room and enough opportunity to put a good building, good sized shed or accessory building.
So they, your own existing building, okay, grand father, or a tenant?
Correct. So the, any, yeah, so, yeah, so any current building right now as it stands, will be kind of, you know, will be grand father.
And this did not change the garage. The way our orders were written, the garage, whether attached or detached, did not count as an accessory.
Correct. So there, we do have a separate carport slash garage for that, so this one is specifically for accessory buildings.
And the only other thing too, is the language, because everything is called storage building, and people would say, oh, it's not a storage building, it's a she shed, or a he shed, or a man cave. And so it's like, we're just gonna call it all accessory building, so that way there's not these little loopholes. So that language was changed in this too.
Okay. Well, with that.
And, and, sorry, we'll put, and P and Z, no, P and Z did approve it. They talked about it last meeting, so I know it kind of came in the update last council meeting, and they did make the motion to, to, but they meant, they recommended the change of, so I just wanted to clarify about that.
Okay. So if you have five percent, is the amount of the building on the building site?
On the building site.
Not the, not the whole.
Not the whole.
You got three thousand square foot, I'm sorry, five percent of that.
No, it is, it's the building site. So, so ten thousand.
If you have a half acre, it's five percent of a half acre.
Yes. Correct. And so, when we, so when we kind, the way we kind of scaled it, because I think initially it was like two percent.
Two percent?
Yeah. And so, the way that it kind of was written, is you could do two percent, but that was a large structure, and then having four structures on a small quarter acre lot kind of changed things. So we kind of looked around, we did some research with some other cities, and kind of found that happy medium that would work for Morgan's Point Resort. So five percent of, you know, ten thousand, you know, square foot was reasonable. That was like, I think, a five hundred square foot building. And so it, it gave some flexibility for small homes to be able to put in, it's on his he shed, or she shed, or whatever shed. And so if you had a five acre lot, you could put in a fourteen hundred square foot warehouse if you wanted.
So is it, is it the whole?
Correct.
All right, motion.
I'll move forward, and it will be with the correction sheet that you have to replace for the adoption of these changes.
Second. The further discussion, questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Item passes. Now it's time for the city manager to report.
So I don't, there's definitely a lot of things moving on, or moving, you know, forward in the city. This has kind of been a busy couple weeks. Of course, you know, I always want to talk about our staff, they're hardworking, BJ's not here probably because he's sick, as much as we've kind of put him to work this week. You know, Butler has kind of delayed some of the progress on the road, but we are diligently working through that. We are in the middle of the budget right now, internally, just kind of getting everything, you know, kind of ready to go. You know, the council kind of gets the, gets the updates weekly. Lot, lot, lot happening, a lot moving around, been able, been very fortunate to meet with a lot of residents and kind of chat. Some things on the horizon that I'm working with volunteers on is talking with the city managers, so we'll be kind of kicking that off beginning of June, I believe. Start working on city manager's corner, and some other new, official written newsletter and stuff, so we are working on a lot of different things. Again, we're moving a hundred miles an hour, so please bear with us, and sometimes you gotta be persistent with me, I'm just by choice. I have time to check, so make sure you can hit me up. So if there's something that I'm missing, you know, please come by the office, and if you need a call, I'll always stop for lunch, and let them meet with all the residents. But, other than that, the big thing I want to do is, we started looking at, you know, obviously we have our, we have the canvas of the vote coming in, so we decided to present something to, and, and we decided to go with kind of our street signs, and take our street signs, the only difference is it doesn't have the border on it.
That'll work.
And, kind of make this one on the street. You know, we may, we may send J line tomorrow, you know, for a violation, but that's okay. This is still looking good for the minute, but, but no, this is, this is the first one that we've done, and we kind of want to keep this a running tradition, and, and we thought this would be a great, a great opportunity to present you a, a small token of all the service and hard work that you've done, you know, for the city, and we really appreciate you volunteering your time. Okay. And if there's any council members, anybody that'd like to say anything?
Ask them.
Sure. Come on, Steve.
I quit Jen's spa, sorry.
Yeah, come on, come on. So, so one of the programs that we kind of talked about, it's probably been a couple months now, I've only been here a hundred days tomorrow, that's why, it hasn't been a lot, no, it feels like, it feels like forever. But the International City Managers Association, you know, large organization of city managers, really kind of help, you know, both students and veterans out. So part of the Veterans Advisory Board, which works with Department of Defense and military to kind of pull in scope for how we give soldiers, service members, opportunities to figure out what local government is. So they have private sector businesses, they have opportunities to get into banking, accounting, building, whatever. And so the local government one is pretty new. And so Steve, I'll let him give a, at least introduce himself, but he's about to retire from the military after twenty-two years of service. And so he, he decided to do the ICMA's field trip program, which basically he's working in, in the city, you know, while he's still on active duty, exposing himself to what local government is, and, you know, been able to work with projects, and, you know, worked with our staff, worked with council, and worked with our residents on different things going on. And so we'll have him through the beginning of July, I believe, and, and next council meeting, he'll have a presentation, so he's got some homework to do this month. But, no, we're excited to have him on board, this is the first time we're hosting somebody, so we look to kind of have, have some more veterans and service members, you know, come in and, you know, do some work for Morgan's Point Resort, and have us, you know, not back on the map, but just give us exposure, and, and really show what Morgan's Point Resort is like as a, as a team internally, and how we, ours, residents, we stick together, so. Steve.
Oh, well, my name is Steve Mondello, originally from California, so please don't hold that against me. This is our second time meeting station here in Texas. We were here back in two thousand six, and we left, I wanna say two thousand eleven-ish, somewhere around there. And we knew that we're coming back here, we decided to move back to the community of where we lived months before, which is our eyes. So, served in the military, be twenty-two years when I retired. I have twenty-six years altogether, had some time with the National Guard, Army Reserve, and decided to go full-time, and it's been a great career. And I'm looking forward to move on to the next chapter of my life. Outwork, Sergeant Bruce Pass Mondello, back to the top of the food chain, being here, just another experience. I'm Steve, I'm here. I'm getting used to being called Steve, in recent weeks. But it's great to be here, and I've met a lot of, a lot of great people, working with a great team, and looking forward to the people above in the next, next several weeks. Thank you.
Alright, and item number six, is Mary to give our comments?
I'm just gonna say our praises, on the same plane for, for being with us the last four years. Of course, I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for Dwayne.
His mother's birthday?
When I first started coming to meetings, baby, when I was six years old, getting involved, Dwayne was the only one I knew on the council. I could look at him when I talked, I scared to talk in front of people, I still get skipped around, baby. But he was, he was the person I could stare at, and, and I even apologized, I said, I'm sorry I stared at you so much. You know, I felt like he was taking what I was saying, you know, and, and he told me, I said, hey, look, we didn't change anything, and Dwayne goes, you gotta run, you know, go and make the good run. He goes, one person can't change anything. It's true, one person can't change anything. So I, I have Dwayne to thank for being here. And Dwayne, the last four years, the hardest decisions in my life were, Dwayne has guided us through. I mean, basically, the hardest decisions up there are really hard for us, and Dwayne, you know, did awesome job doing it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, but what I want to say is, first, I want to congratulate you one hundred percent for the praise, that's where our system works. And I know we got it, I know that you need my approval, but I, I know you're going to do it for yourself.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sean, I want to congratulate you too, Sean Knuckles, and of course, I'm not leaving y'all out. Y'all are your comments. But, so, yeah, congratulations, and if anybody else has any comments? You know, let's get to the candidates, see how we score it.
I just have a couple things. I hate to do this after calling this, but I just wanted to say, we had so many good compliments on our election judges this year, how helpful they were, friendly they were. I think we need to acknowledge them. So of course, I feel you out there, she was a few of the biggest, we said, we're headed out of judge's camp, and she, I know she's gonna be here, right?
I'm here.
She's here somewhere. There you are, up there. He did a magnificent job getting Bayes blessed back there, he was an election judge, Pam Robinson. Anyway, we thank y'all so much for doing this. This is a tireless job, you're there for hours on end, and sometimes you don't see its soul for a long time, so we thank you, we appreciate you, and we really appreciate the way that you ran it this year, the helpfulness and friendliness, so I want to give that. The other thing is, I always love to announce this when I read about it, is one of our dream team on our water department, Landhead, who is an exceptional young man, he just passed the TCEQ exam, now he has his classy voice water, so Jesse passed our congratulations along to him. And then also, Patrice, who works in the office, or she's the office manager in the office, they got what, another perfect inspection report, and she does, she does a paperwork on it, and she keeps them all straight, right? So let's give kudos to Patrice next time.
And she's back with us all the time.
Oh, and she's back all the time, she did, she's part of it. We appreciate y'all. And can I just take a moment? We had a letter that was sent, you don't see that in your pocket, it was sent for police and fire and paramedics, first responders. And I think you really need to hear this, because a lot of times, you know, we hear things, but we don't necessarily hear in the hearts of people how they feel. I'm not gonna say the person's name, just because they didn't have a number and didn't get permission, so I'm gonna leave this without the name, it's a short note, but I really feel that y'all need to hear it, and police and fire department, paramedics, I want to say this out loud, so everybody can hear this. On behalf of this family, we want to thank you for all the help you've provided over the years. Your mercy and service provided us with many more years, I love to cherish, and bless your brother. On many occasions, your speed saved your life. You were there even when it was just a woman who wanted to talk. It is with sad, thankful heart that we tell you this. She passed away, four twenty-four, twenty-one, with all her children by her side. She was a Western Hill Baptist, she's with Jesus now. She accepted Jesus as her Lord and Savior, as that kind of thing you're saying. Thank you, and God bless you, P S D matter. I thought that was beautiful. Okay, I'm finished.
Alright. And we will move on to item number seven. Kansas, the May first, twenty twenty-one, mayor and city council elections, Mr. Hill Sand, Sandfield, MPR election judge.
Well, thank you very much, uh, for the approbation you gave earlier, but I would also like to add my thanks to the city and to the county. Bell County really supported this one this election. And I'd also like to thank some of our office staff, Joyce and Neil, who helped out when they needed, and especially Pam Robinson, Les Minor, and Debbie Bates, who tirelessly did the election, but most of all, Lefia, who spent many hours, many phone calls, and really made it a success. So that, here are the results, we'll post them officially, I suppose. We have a total of three hundred and seventeen voters, two hundred and fifteen voted early, and one hundred and two voted on election day. The results were Dennis Green, a hundred and ninety-six, Andrew Vittle, forty-four, and Dwayne Gossett, seventy-five. For our city council, Bruce Lenhart, a hundred and eighty-eight, Heather Hartman, two hundred and fifty, Sean Knuckles, a hundred and thirty-eight, Larry Gossett, a hundred and twenty, Robbie Johnson, two hundred and three, and Ronnie Snow, two hundred and twenty-three. Those are the results of our election. Any questions? It went very smoothly. We had, I didn't think any problems in this election, and I was expecting a lot worse.
Thank you. Alright, council, I need, I'll open a second. The items to vote?
We can all shoot. The pass, the vote, any person?
All in favor? Any opposed? Item passes, and now we will go straight to votes of offices. Mr. Green, you got your vote?
Hey, close history record, all life do not rest me.
But I did suggest it.
You ready for me? I wore my tie, just want y'all to see that. I had to say, Taylor, though, I wondered when I'd get an opportunity to swear at you publicly. You've been doing it for years.
Yeah, I like you, Mr. Hill. Yeah.
Alright.
Are you ready?
I guess so.
You'll raise your hand. Uh, you'll repeat after me, please. I Dennis Green.
I Dennis Green.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of the city council of Morgan's Point Resort City.
Of the city, of the office of city council and mayor, of the resort city of Portland.
Okay. Okay. And, and, okay, all that's left is it. And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect.
Preserve, protect.
And defend the constitution, uh, the constitution and the laws.
Defend the constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
This state.
This state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Go, we need my officer. We autograph.
We're learning that one for next time.
Okay, council, for, just, I just want to say hi.
Oh, go ahead.
My name's Ted W Hill, I'm your, actually, I'm your Justice of the Peace in Precinct One, have been for twenty-seven years, and if you voted for me, I appreciate that, and all the support and everything else over, over the years. I'm also your municipal court judge, and have been since nineteen ninety-three, so this would make that roughly the twenty-third year. So, and?
Your other title?
Oh. I'll fight this in this way.
Well, council, glad you're here, congratulations, Steve, we got old members, we got a new member. The honest vocal board, and we're, I'm gonna do the honor of swearing to you to call him, okay? So if you, if you stand up, bring your right hand, feet after me. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of city council.
Of the office of city council.
Of Morgan's Point Resort City.
Of Morgan's Point Resort City.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the constitution.
Defend the constitution.
And laws of the United States.
Laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God. Let's roll. I'm only gonna thank a couple comments, because we're keeping it short here, but after our two managers talking, there's a lot of, we've got a lot of things going, I'm gonna say, we're gonna have fun this next couple years, okay? So I need everybody on board, and if everybody on board, we need volunteers. Y'all came out today, y'all gave us an hour of your time, if you could give another hour a month, give us two hours a month, you could be on our councils, or boards, or committees, and that's the only way we find out what's going on in the city, if you tell us, okay? So please consider that, and all you have to do is call city hall, or go online, and just turn your name in, and vote in reference, and contact, so that we can let you know that something's available. Right now, we're probably gonna have an opening for the Economic Development Corporation, and there's always somebody moving in or moving out, so we always need a few people, so please consider that, would you? And, other than that, we're gonna, let y'all visit with everybody here, the council members, if you'd like to visit, and I'm gonna thank y'all for taking an active part of this community, and if you care, or you wouldn't be here today. So thank y'all for coming out and showing your support. Well, I would like to have y'all have any comments, please take some.
Just, I would like to thank everyone who came out to vote. We appreciate you taking your time to do that, and seeing that shows what wonderful, involved community that y'all are, so we thank you for your vote, especially if you voted for me. The rest of you, what were you thinking?
And your other title?
Mrs. Claus.
There you go. I thank y'all all for coming out and voting, and coming tonight, too. We love to see a full house, we really do, so out here, just what we're doing, so thank y'all so much.
Ronnie, would you like to put in?
Thanks for the votes, guys.
Bruce? Ronnie?
I appreciate everybody coming out to vote, I definitely appreciate y'all who voted for me. Also, as we spoke about in the meeting, we read it is, it's not our city, it's everybody's city, so I want to encourage y'all, and everyone else on the council, will to come to us when you have issues, or you have ideas, or there's something that we need to know.
you have issues, or you have ideas, or there's something that we need to know about, okay? The only way we're going to know, as he said, is if you tell us. But get involved, it's your community.
I'll echo that. Thank y'all for coming out tonight, and I really want to say thank you too, for those who came to the meeting. There's some really good questions, and I hope, I hope the answers were what you wanted to hear. If they're not, you know, feel free to approach me and, and talk about them, because I'm happy about running again, or going to serve again, and look forward to helping. Thank you.
You ready? I hear a motion to the chairman.
I'm moving to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody vote? Thank you, folks, for coming. Please, please, for a little bit.